Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this a regular meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission of June 4, 2013, to order. Our first item on the agenda is land use items for discussion and possible action. Item A, Richard Butzler, map amendment, PZ 13.1743, requesting review and approval to rezoned property addressed as 498 South Mockingbird from RSS, that's residential, single-family, small lot, excuse me, to RT, residential two-family, and RTM, residential two-family and multifamily districts, to allow for construction of duplexes on the north tract of the land and apartments on the south tract. Tom?
Tom Coots, Development Services. As you said, it's a request seeking two different zoning designations. The RT zoning request, which is two-family, is for the northern portion of the property, basically along that gray line you can see running through. And the RTM would be for the southern part of the property, which is, the property is surrounded by the RSS zoning district to the north. And east is, to the east is RSS PUD, which is a planned unit development. To the south is CS, commercial shopping, and to the west is RTM, residential two-family and multifamily. You see from the air photo that the existing, the property is undeveloped. It's surrounded to the south also by undeveloped property, the north by single-family residential houses, and partly to the east by single-family houses. And also, special note, on the east side, where my mouse is hovering, there's a, I guess I'll call it a condo or a fourplex, but it's an attached housing unit. And to the west, we have some multifamily and a mobile home park. Findings for this case include, the proposed RTM zoning appears to be consistent with the C-3 plan. The C-3 plan says that the area is appropriate for low-density residential. Low-density residential allows for up to 20 units per acre. The RTM district allows for up to 20 units per acre. The property is located adjacent to commercial and multifamily zoning. And the RT zoning would act as a buffer to the existing single-family uses, which were along the north side of the property. And that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Tom. At this point, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment to please come forward. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry. I'm here representing the developer tonight. We are requesting two different zoning classifications here. It is currently broken up into two different legal descriptions. It's under the same ownership, but it is actually two different legal descriptions. As Tom described, that gray line there, splitting through the middle, is the designation between the two different pieces of property. So we were wanting to keep that designation and zone the north tract RT to act as a buffer to the RTM that we're requesting along the south. We believe this will be a natural transition and protect those single-family residences to the north. We are requesting the, well, we would be using the RTM district to the south for residential multifamily up to the 20 units per acre. That's just one of the allowed uses. We did have a volunteer neighborhood meeting on May the 2nd to let the neighbors know what we were planning. We did try to make it clear to them that we were asking for a straight rezoning, so any of the potential uses that are allowed by code could be built. We did show them a sketch of some apartments there to the south, which would be built-in phases, and that would be the first part of the development that we would do. The north tract may take a little bit longer. But that was all, we wanted to get their input. Their major concern was screening to the west. There was duplexes over there. But then again, we are asking for the straight rezoning and don't expect any variances or overlays to be requested in the future. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. Did they say they're having, they requested screening to the west?
Yes. Let me see if I can get back to the aerial. There we go. The owners of these properties right here.
Are those the, like?
I believe those are duplexes, yes.
Are duplexes up and down? They're two-story, aren't they?
Yes, they are. And again, we were proposing a two-story apartment, but, yeah.
Kelly, and I may need to ask, staff, is screening required between that zoning and what the potential rezone of this property would be?
I believe if there's residential to residential, it technically is not. But that would be something that we could consider. We won't be asking for any variances if it is required.
Okay.
But it would be up next on that western portion, it'd be up next to RTM, RTM. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so more than likely, screening wouldn't be required?
I don't believe so.
In a normal situation, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Harris?
Thanks, Dusty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak in favor of this map amendment? Anyone else in favor? Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this map amendment? Anyone in opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
Okay. We can accept the staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. Or we can find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the city council deny the map amendment. Do you have any other questions for me?
Anything else for Tom? Okay, thank you. Discussion? Commissioner?
Dusty, I just had an observation when I was out there. I know that the comp three plan is brand-new, and I know we often have discussions whether it's going to be a footprint or whether we're going to actually use it. And I, I mean, as, as the rule, if you will, and I know that it's quoted here in staff's presentation. Obviously, we don't have a problem with it. The neighbors didn't show up. The fourplexes are there. But with the comp plan identifying this as high-density so close to the new Highland Park School, I was just, I was kind of shocked because we are taking out an RSS area into a higher-density RTM. And I just kind of observed that.
I guess maybe the flipside to that, though, Becky, may be that, you know, there might be children that would be in these apartments as well. So being closer to the school may be an advantage. Potato, patata.
There you go. I don't, I don't know. I just, I just thought, I'm watching Highland Park come up out there, and I'm trying to watch the progression of it and see where we might be able to grow and that sort of thing. And I just thought that was an observation I made today when looking at the parks and everything around it and that sort of thing.
Very soon. You know, I might say, I do think it's a classic example of good step-down zoning. This is an opportunity where if you look in the zoning manual, it's correct the way it's stepping either up or down, depending on which way you're coming from, from more intense uses back to obviously, you know, single-family homes. So I have no problem.
I move we accept staff findings and recommend that we move this forward on to the city council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And the tie goes to...
David can have it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to second to accept staff's alternative number one. Please place your votes. That is approved with six votes yes, with Commissioner Merrifield absent tonight. Okay, next item on the agenda, City of Stillwater map amendment, PZ 13.1748, requesting review and approval to rezoned property addressed as 919 East 9th Avenue from P Public to A Agriculture District.
Tom Coots, Development Services. This, as you stated, is a request actually from the city, to rezone a piece of property that is privately owned. The property is zoned, currently zoned, public. See on the, on the map there, it's surrounded by RSS zoning to the north, residential, small lot, single-family, agricultural to the east, and public to the south and west. The property has been apparently inadvertently zoned public for many, many years, since at least 1985 is the latest we can find. Property has never been owned by the public, and it's never been planned to be owned by the public, and the future plans aren't, aren't to acquire it for the public use. And so with the public zoning district, it doesn't allow for much private use of the property at all. And so the, we're seeking to fix the situation that is impacting one of the citizens in the, in the city here. Do you have any, so let's just move on through this. We've got an air photo of the property. It is undeveloped piece of property. Of particular note is that it doesn't, there aren't any, doesn't actually access any built public streets. There are some right-of-way, rights-of-way adjacent to the property. The property does have, a significant portion of the property is in the floodplain. And so we move on to these findings. The proposed agricultural zoning is consistent with the C-3 plan. And basically, the C-3 plan says that this area is appropriate for, once again, low-density residential uses. Agricultural is a residential district in that it allows for residences to happen, to occur on the property. It's extremely low-density residential, though. Agriculture requires a minimum five-acre lot size. And once again, the low-density classification in the C-3 plan proposes up to 20 units per acre. And so, very big difference there. Finding number two, the property is located adjacent to agricultural, public, and residential zoning districts. The development of the property is highly restricted due to the floodplain and the lack of public road access. Number four, the existing lot size would become legal non-conforming. Once again, I said that the, the minimum lot size in the agricultural district is normally five acres. This property is about 3.37 acres. It's been in that configuration for a number of years. But to actually build on it would be pretty difficult. The people who own this property own other properties in the area, so it's just kind of a part of their larger property. Do you have any other questions for me?
Questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment? Anyone in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the map amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for staff's alternatives, please.
Okay. We can accept the staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. Or we can find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the city council deny the map amendment. Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you, Tom. Discussion? Commissioner?
I move we accept staff findings and recommend the city council approve the map amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second to accept staff's findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed map amendment. Please place your votes. That is approved with six yes votes, and again, Commissioner Merrifield absent. Okay, moving on to item C. Craig Nicholson, a map amendment, PZ 13.1749, requesting review and approval to rezoned property addressed as 819 South Perkins Road from RSS residential, single, small, residential single-family, small lot to CG Commercial General District to allow construction of a proposed retail store. Mr. Coots?
Okay. Tom Coots, Development Services. Got the aerial map on here. You'll notice that the property is basically sandwiched between two CG general, commercial general properties. Property is also surrounded on the east by some public zoning, and the west by some light industrial. Note that the, there's an air photo of the property. Note that it's an undeveloped piece of property. Properties to the north and south are commercially developed, and also the west. And to the east is a city property. That's where the, like a waste management is, in the recycling area. Property is significantly impacted by floodplain as well. Findings include, the proposed CG zoning appears to be consistent with the C-3 plan. The C-3 plan calls for commercial along that corridor of Perkins Road there. Property is located adjacent to commercial zoning. Once again, it's right between two commercial properties. A portion of the property is located within a floodplain. Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment? Please come forward. Again, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Craig Nicholson. I live at 310 South Berry Street here in Stillwater. I recently purchased that property, and I'd just like the opportunity to open up a business there. So it seemed like a good position in town, and residential is really out of place there. So I hope you will take that into consideration. Anything for me?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the map amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Tom?
Tom Coots, Development Services. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. Or we can find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the city council deny the map amendment. Do you have any other questions for me?
Anything else for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Discussion?
I think it's pretty blatant, and we ought to get the RSS off there. So I would move that we accept staff's finding and recommend the city council approve the proposed map amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to second to accept staff's findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. Please place your votes. That is also approved, six votes yes, with one absent. Okay, kind of have a little different animal for item D. This is called a sketch planned unit development. I would like to say right off the bat that I own several properties within 1,000 feet of this proposal, just to put it on the record. This time, I think I would like to see if Paula Dennison would come up and kind of explain to all of us how this sketch planned unit development worked, a little history behind it, if you would, Paula.
Certainly. Thank you, Paula Dennison, Development Services. As y'all noticed, you did not have a report or attachments or anything like that in your planning commission packet regarding this item. The purpose and a little bit of the history, Mr. Chair, as you indicated. This is an opportunity before all of the heavy front-end engineering work, civil work, design work, architectural work, et cetera, is gone into a PUD because we require that on the front end for preliminary planned unit development. Before all of that time and energy and expense is spent, this is an opportunity for the developer and their local representative, if they have one, to come and discuss with the planning commission, your feel and your thoughts and your ideas on what their proposal is. It allows an opportunity to see if the current proposal fits in with how the surrounding vicinity is developed, or you as planning commission may envision through the comp plan and any other master plans we have for that area to develop. Or if there are any adjustments that may need to be made to be less of an impact to the surrounding vicinity. So this is simply a discussion between the developer as the proposer of the project and the planning commission for feedback, is what it is. One of the requirements for this sketch PUD is that the developer notify the property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, not for the purpose of having public input at this meeting. That will come down the road when it becomes a formal submission and application to the City of Stillwater for review and evaluation and recommendation by the planning commission and action by the city council. So the public input component is not at this stage. This is simply, as I indicated, to gather feedback from the planning commission to see if this is the right fit, at the right location, under what is proposed, and any adjustments that can be made.
Right, that's great.
Clear it up a little bit?
Yeah, it does.
We do these very rarely.
Right.
So we've had maybe two before, since we, we added this into the code. We hope that it will continue to be used, and that use will increase because it does give some guidance and some direction before all of that is spent on the project.
Now, if, if the developer decides to move forward with this, Paula, will there have to be neighborhood meetings?
Yes.
Scheduled, or how, you want to speak on that a little bit about if the process does move forward, what will, what will happen there?
Certainly. After tonight, it goes no further. The planning commission does not take action on this item. It's just discussion, back and forth. After tonight, if the developer chooses to make changes based on what they have heard from the planning commission, then they can do so, or they can submit it as they have drafted up for this evening's discussion. They submit that as a regular preliminary planned unit development. One of the requirements of the preliminary PUD is that between the time it is submitted to the city as a formal application and the time it goes to planning commission, the same owners within 300 feet of the subject property are notified, and a neighborhood meeting is held. They can do that optionally at this stage, but it is a requirement in order for the formal application to come to the planning commission. They have to have held that neighborhood meeting within a little window that we have set up in the code. At that neighborhood meeting, staff does not make the presentation. Staff is only there to answer any procedural or administrative questions of the process. The developer presents their proposal and takes input from the neighborhood at that time. And that's where, as y'all have seen, any time a PUD comes to us, the neighbors, sometimes we hear, the neighbors have been concerned about XYZ, and we have made adjustments. You hear that a lot when, when the PUD gets to this stage. After that neighborhood meeting, and staff will prepare the normal report with all the attachments to come to the planning commission. Planning commission will hold the public hearing, just as you have on map amendments this evening. After that public hearing, you will make your recommendation to the city council. It goes to city council. They hold the public hearing and take action. That's the preliminary PUD stage. At that time, the civiles have been submitted as part of it and are still being reviewed. The architectural plans, because there are some typical building elevations that are required in the preliminary PUD stage, the site plan, et cetera. It is the locked-down, this is what will be built, once it gets all the way through the process. And that's what the preliminary PUD does. Final PUD, the developer comes in with that. It is an administrative function. You do not see the final PUD. The city council does not see the final PUD. It is staff review, ensuring that the final PUD complies with what y'all have recommended and the city council has approved as the preliminary PUD. And from there, they can, once it's approved, they can get building permits with the rest of the documents being accepted by the city.
Right. And also, correct me if I'm wrong, this body at the preliminary PUD hearing can also add more requirements before we make our recommendation to the city council, correct, based on what we might hear from the public or our own field?
Yes, sir, absolutely. That is one of the items in a preliminary PUD, as opposed to, and Kelly's already mentioned it this evening, straight zoning. With straight zoning, whatever uses are allowed, as long as they meet code, drainage, infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, they can be built there. Under a PUD, depending on the impact to the surrounding vicinity, whether it's traffic, whether it's water system, wastewater system, electric, pedestrian availability for, for that mode of transportation. We had one a number of years ago that one of the requirements that came out of the planning commission for the PUD was a bus stop, because it was a university student development. So the requirement out of the planning commission was for a bus stop. So those additional amenities and requirements to improve the project from the community standpoint, as you're a representative of, or to mitigate any additional impacts that you might see that this project may have on any of the infrastructure throughout the community. You do have that right to place those.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions while I'm up here?
Let everyone kind of have a feel for it.
Okay.
And so, okay, thank you.
Turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate it. One thing that I would encourage we as council or we as commissioners to do is to be sure once the developer gives their presentation, they're up here trying to get a feel for our feel for their project. So I would encourage everyone, maybe individually, to be sure and voice your thoughts once, once their presentation's done. It would help them determine whether or not they want to move forward to the next step with the project. So any help there would be appreciated. And just to make sure everyone here, definitely would encourage everyone that has concerns, please, if this moves forward, go to your neighborhood meetings. And then for sure, be back up here if you don't feel satisfied that the project's going the way you want to go. If when, when and if it comes through as a preliminary PUD, you'll, you'll have your time to speak at that point. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and ask the developer to come up and give their presentation to all of us.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry. I'm here representing the developers tonight, but I first want to apologize to any neighbors that came tonight. In my letter, I stated that they would have an opportunity to give us their input tonight. That was my mistake. And I invite them to stay after, out in the lobby afterwards, and I'll take any comments that you may have.
We appreciate that.
Kelly, thank you very much, and don't feel bad. I put out the same information before the meeting, so I apologize.
We are here tonight to gather your input about an apartment complex. With the sketch PUD, it is my responsibility to do the PowerPoint presentation that staff normally does for me. They do such a good job. So bear with me tonight, I'm in control. So the apartment complex that we are proposing tonight is on the west side of Boomer, across from the high school football stadium. Progress Builders are the development group, and their representatives are here tonight to answer any questions, and they will get up later and kind of give their background and why they chose Stillwater. Also here tonight is Larry Brown as the real estate professional, and he may have some input to you later. So the project before you tonight, like Paula explained, is utilizing the sketch phase of the PUD process, and we are here to get your input tonight, so we greatly appreciate that. So the property that we're talking about, that I briefly described earlier, is currently under three separate ownerships. And the bold pink line is the entire tract of land. The main tract is occupied by Yorktown Apartments there. And Bennett Drive actually cuts through the existing complex with a public right-of-way. Moore Avenue is along the north property line. Boomer is on the east. A Creek is to the west. There is an existing apartment complex, and my aerial didn't go out far enough, but the existing apartment complex is directly to the south, right there. The park and the new Real Rogers School is to the southwest. This is the park area, and I believe the school is more over in this location. This is the park area, and I believe the school is more over in this location. There are residential homes across the creek to the west. It is zoned RSS. There's a variety of owner-occupied homes and rental homes there. Our tracts of land, we have both CG and RTM zoning. Our subject tract, again, is shown in turquoise this time. You can see that there's several different properties, but they are really only three ownerships. But we've got the RTM down here to the south, and then CG. RSS is to the west, as I described, with public lands to the southwest. There is CG, CS, and public across from Boomer as well. With this PUD, we would be asking for an underlying zoning district of RMI. This slide shows the conceptual layout compared to existing infrastructure. With the existing apartments there, there's quite a few utilities that would have to either be, a lot of them could be abandoned up to a certain point, but there is existing infrastructure there, as well as, if you can distinguish between all these lines, there is FEMA floodway and floodplain along the west property line. There are several streets to take access from, and this would ease congestion onto any one street. We are proposing, let's see, there's one to the north, so one, two, couple there, three, four, five, down on Knoblock, about five to six access points to different streets. We would be conducting a traffic study to determine the actual number of access points needed. The water and sewer is available, but no capacity analysis has been done at this time. There, again, also is the FEMA floodplain and floodway along the west property line. A hydraulic analysis would be done to look at that creek to verify that the proposed improvements in elevations would not raise the floodplain elevation. Kind of got oblonged here. From this side, you can see, if you get out your magnifying glass, this chart up here, we are proposing only four bedroom units, so there's just four bedroom units. We've got three principal structures that would be four stories tall, with the clubhouse, that pink building there in the middle being only two stories. The total tract is ten point six acres with a total of a hundred and fifty-six units. This gives us a density of fourteen point seven units per acre. This is well under the allowed density of thirty units per acre in the RMI zoning. In fact, the RMI zoning was selected because we will meet all the RMI code requirements or even be more restrictive. And RTM, which is the zoning classification just under the RMI, so it would be more restrictive, we would be request, we would have to request a max height to be raised from thirty-five to fifty, and then we would be pushing the density limit. In our RTM, we're only allowed fifteen units per acre. So for those two things, that's why we requested the higher zoning classification of RMI. The front building setbacks are required to be twenty-foot, since this whole site is basically located along one street or another, there's a lot of front setbacks. All along Knoblock, Bennett, Boomer, and Moore Avenue would be considered fronts. So the remainings would be side yard setbacks, which we are requesting to be sixty-foot. For residential housing, side yard setbacks are only five-foot, and then three additional for every story above the first. But the way we've positioned the buildings, we're asking to be more restrictive on the side yard setbacks, just because of, it looks better here. The buildings are located along the eastern property line. This gives them great visibility from the main roads, and then again, provides that distance, that buffer from the residential homes that are located along the west. The creek, again, is the FEMA floodway, so there's actually floodplain there. No, floodway, so we can't touch that creek. We can adjust the floodplain that is out farther. So that buffer, that tree buffer, will remain there along the west property line. There is quite a bit of elevation change across the site from east to west, and so retaining walls may be used incorporated into the landscaping. Those lines are really faint, but these are two-unit layouts, they're the four bedrooms. You can probably see it better, I believe, hopefully you've got a packet from me at least on the agenda. They're very large and spacious. This slide just shows a basic elevation, but the important thing to take away from this is we are only going up to that fifty-foot building height, which is the max allowed in RMI. And then this is kind of the perspective that is also up over here. We're proposing to use a flat roof, and then the exterior of the building would be a combination of brick and siding. And so this building does a great job in showing that layout. Do you have any questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
This may be too early to ask, but have you talked to any about screening on the west side? What you might do on screening, or how you might set lighting up for that parking lot area? It's not going to be brighter than the football stadium, but.
That's true. In fact, we may be able to use some of that light.
Yeah, to shadow.
Yeah. No, we haven't really gotten into those specifics, but of course, we would be doing that. The trees along that creek would provide a natural buffer. And having the parking lot, let me get back to, well, there we go. Having the parking lot along that west side, and also having the floodplain and floodway lines over there, we may have some retaining walls as well. So it will all be meshed into that. As far as lighting, we haven't discussed it yet, but I'm sure it would all be downward-facing lights and not spread.
Got anything else, Kelly? Speak on the parking spaces a little bit for me, Kelly. How are we looking there versus what you're proposing versus what's required?
We are over what's required. For a four-bedroom unit, I believe you're required three parking spaces per unit, and we're, I believe, at one point one per bed. So we're definitely providing at least one parking space for every bed.
Yeah, just looking at this table, it looks like the required was four hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces. Y'all are proposing six hundred and twenty-nine.
Yeah.
With nine handicap spaces, for a total of six thirty-eight, is that correct?
Yes.
And the same way with bicycles, a hundred and ninety-five are required, and you're proposing two hundred.
Yeah, I was just rounding up in the general manner of bike racks.
Right. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looked like y'all had tried to channel as much of the traffic as you could to the existing intersection where the stoplight is, is that correct?
Correct. That is the intersection with the stoplight, and Domino's is located there in that little corner right there.
Okay.
So we would definitely be working with that owner as well. But that is the main intersection, it's right there by the clubhouse. We will be working with that stoplight and whatever the traffic analysis comes back with.
That's one thing I'd like for you to encourage the developers. I know that, you know, the more traffic we can get to a traffic line, to a four-lane artery, the better off we're going to be. Sure, there'll be some concern from the residents with trying to limit as much access as we can on the streets that go west, back toward North Washington.
Unfortunately, I can't see residents from this development going west. That's a main access point to the university. So I can't say that's not going to happen.
No, I understand. I would like to try to limit that as much as possible, and try to force everybody to the parking lot if we can, to the stoplight. Again, I know sometimes you can't. We do have to have emergency access as well, and so I do understand that. A lot of the streets along there, where they meet North Washington, are terrible intersections.
Yeah.
They all go down from the road, and you can't see, and.
They all go down to this creek.
Yes, exactly. So anyway, again, it looks like initially here, you've tried to point people onto Boomer rather than the neighborhood.
I have a couple of questions. I don't know, is my mic on? I guess so. You pointed out that the RMI, with your RMI PUD, is actually less restrictive than the actual RMI zoning, is that correct?
It's equal to or more restrictive, yeah.
I was around that land today, but that surprises everybody, huh? Your layout was interesting when I actually took privy and drove around it. If you were to request straight zoning, would your layout on the project for the developer be similar? Or have you put it on this piece of paper like this because of the PUD and trying to arrange it? Or would it arrange the same way?
It would arrange the same way. I really think that this building layout works for both the developer and the surrounding homeowners. It puts the buildings out front where everybody can see them from the major roads. It also puts them farthest away from the west property line and provides that buffer from the residents.
Well, I like it.
We're still meeting all the building setbacks.
So basically, you would still be, even on a straight zoning request, you still feel like you'd be at like fourteen point seven?
Yes.
Because of the lay of the land?
Mm-hmm.
And I too liked the layout of the parking lot going to, it's heavily dense over there. I don't know if it's just because we're so green right now. My God, we kind of look like iron people, look outside, I think. We're finally through with the drought, everybody.
Yes.
Water, the creek actually had water in it again. The point would be, is between, when I drove by and I looked it up, we're CG, CG, and RTM.
Mm-hmm.
We've had apartment units on there, to what density, I don't know. But it's been historically there for as long as I've been here. My question to you is why, and I like the PUD, I like the sketch phase, I'm glad we're having this discussion, but I'm just frankly in awe, again, that we've got an apartment coming through that's a PUD.
Yes.
And I don't understand why sometimes we're going to use zoning and sometimes we're going to use a PUD. And I'm, I truly, with the RMI, you're fifty feet on exactly what you would put there, would meet the criteria. On RTM, which half of it's already by right, you would ask for?
Height.
A variance on height? So why are we in a PUD sketch?
The PUD was suggested, and actually, we were following through with it, with your input, because of the residential neighbors to the west. The City Council, we believe that the direction from the City Council is if it abuts an RSS and you're proposing an apartment complex, even if straight rezoning would work, they would prefer a PUD. That is the reason we are here.
And on straight zoning, it doesn't matter, it goes to the worst-case scenario, I take it. So if you go to RMI, it's going to be built by right?
Yes.
But traditionally, it's already been RTM and C?
G.
G. Which would be commercial, general?
Yes. And commercial, general, has no height limit. The only difference to us would be that the front setback is twenty-five foot instead of twenty.
If you had straight zoning requests, would the neighbors be notified?
No.
It would just be by right, is that correct?
Well, if it was a rezoning, they would be notified for the Planning Commission and City Council for the rezoning, but they wouldn't have technically any input on the development.
Thank you for answering those questions.
And I guess, Becky, the thing, I think what I'm hearing from Kelly is with the PUD, at least we and/or the council can make recommendations, and even more than recommendations, to the design if, with neighborhood input, if there's something that the neighbors, you know.
And see, I want to say wholeheartedly, I am for the PUD. And I appreciate the developer taking his extra time, spending his money, to come in here and visit with Stillwater residents that have been a long, traditional part of this community. I'm glad that they're respected for it. But it does seem like we're playing hopscotch around the board on what's been done in the past. And if we're going to do it for one developer, I would like to do it for all the developers. I'd like an equal playing field.
Sure.
So that's all I'm saying, but I welcome, and if it takes two extra months to get a project in, understand that these people have been here for thirty and forty years. And we are, and I appreciate you coming to the sketch phase. I truly do.
Yep.
But it just seems like we are bouncing, to me, sometimes we're going to use a sketch, sometimes we're going to use a PUD, and I understand that's the developer's priority.
Right.
But when we're on straight zoning, on some parts, and some parts, and I, I don't know, I'm just a little, it just doesn't make much sense to me anymore. And what I really wanted the PUD to be was a truly planned unit development. Planned unit development with different uses and different phases, and no matter what happens on zoning, we're still going to have to get the traffic right, we're going to have to get the drainage right. We charge city and staff and the developer and people like Kelly to have that round marble, and when you don't, we get awful mad. So I'm going to hush up, but.
No, you're fine, babe.
I really, apartment complex, if it's going to, if we're going to have it where it's going to be up to RSS, and anytime we're going to have something like this, let it be a PUD.
Agreed.
But I certainly haven't seen the consistency, and I'm not upset with Kelly. And again, I want to appreciate all the people that have come here tonight, and I do encourage you to show up to your neighborhood meetings. And obviously, this bus is going to leave the station as a PUD, being at an apartment complex. Thank you for your layout.
We will still check that out.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Kelly right now?
I was just going to go back to you. You said Domino's was in that little corner.
Yes.
So their driveway comes out onto Boomer, right?
It does.
And so are you looking at, trying to work with them to have their drive, I mean, because when you put your new driveway in, you're probably going to create a situation where there's two driveways that are too close together?
Well, their driveway isn't very user-friendly as it is now.
Right.
So yes, we will definitely have to be working with them to make that a better intersection.
I got you. Okay, that's my only comment.
All right. I'll turn it over to someone else.
Commissioners Larry Brown, Sea Star Real Estate, one twelve West Hall of Fame. For disclosure purposes, I am involved in the real estate transaction on these three properties, but I'm also here on behalf of the developer Progress Builders. I would just answer any questions that you might have. From my perspective, we have an existing multifamily that will be redeveloped. Little bit of confusion on why that's zone CG, I don't know. That goes back a long time. I think those apartments were built in the forties, maybe in the fifties. Maybe at that time, there was multifamily allowed in existing commercial zoning. Again, we do have a tract that is currently zoned for multifamily. We think it's a great project. We think it mitigates a lot of the issues on the west side with that neighborhood, putting that buffer zone in there. If you've had the opportunity to go by and drive down Moore Avenue and look back to the east, there is pretty dense foliage there. That creek does provide a natural boundary. If we get to the stage that the developer decides to go through with the project and we have our formal hearing, we'll provide some visuals to show you the type of screening that currently exists there. The neighborhoods to the west, I believe, or to the east, are lower in elevation than this property. So even from the backyards, when you look back up where this development will take place, there's quite a bit of natural screening there, and it really does go a long way in masking off this site. So again, we do have representatives from Progress Builders here. They'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. But appreciate the opportunity to, and by the way, I do like this process. Where's Patty and Paula? I think this is a great opportunity on a no-harm, no-foul basis, just to come and visit. We don't have anything to hide on this development. We'll gladly meet with any of the neighbors that want to visit for a little bit after this meeting's over with. But appreciate the opportunity to come and visit. Any questions?
Anything for Larry?
You guys are easy tonight, I like that.
Thanks, Larry.
I'm Adrian Waddell, I work with Progress Student Living. These are my partners, Michael Allard and Brett Callahan. Appreciate you taking the time to.
Appreciate you taking the time to explore this project with us. I am charged with traveling around the United States to find sites, and I'm, we are probably the blessed, most blessed to find this site. It's very rare to have a site in a revitalization area where there's growth, and I guess the high school is, has major plans for the Simran property. And, you know, I've worked with a number of developers before, and Progress is a straight, they're a straight bunch of guys that show up and put their own money in a project. We don't do many projects, we do two or three a year. And we'll lead a transparent process, so any of the neighbors, or any of the commission or council members that have any questions, we'll be open to, you know, any input or questions that you may have. We, Larry was nice enough to introduce me to a couple of the bankers around town, and so we plan to intend to use as many local trades and local money as we can. And we'll, the industry has come back and told us on a number of our projects that this is probably, their projects are probably the best, well-designed-built projects that they have seen in the United States. And I know I'm biased because I work with them. But that's coming from third-party, and you've seen a lot of these folks come into town recently. There's a high need for student housing, high demand, and we believe we can really kind of, in concert with what's happening with the high school, and the neighborhood, and the university coming towards us, we can really kind of create a synergistic development. Thank you.
I have a question. You say this development is high-quality. In your mind, what are the three things that make it a high-quality development?
So from a, from a social perspective, I'll start there, instead of bricks and mortar, that's pretty self-explanatory when you look at that property. But from, I'll start with a social perspective. We try to create an environment for students to have a living, learning environment, even though it's closely proxim, located next to the university, that when they leave, they have a place to study and co-mingle in a safe environment, where most, most of the time you see kind of a, I'll just use the term, town-and-gown fight, where the kids are kind of in the neighborhoods, or the couches are out front. And so here we have a safe environment for the, for the students, we have, so when I say from a social perspective, instead of the physical, kind of, you know, beauty, we have key fobs, where the, the tenant base is usually 60, 65, 70% female. The parents just seem to be willing to pay a little bit more for the young ladies to go and have a safe environment. So when you come into our property, there's a lot of lighting, there are, you know, call boxes just for safety, we don't usually have that many incidents, but just to make sure. And when you come into the property, you'll have a key fob where that will let the resident of that building into that building, which will let them into their unit and individually into their own room. So you say, well, what's, what's the big deal with that? Well, we track that. We monitor and track between cameras, and also there's a high, from a social perspective, there's a security element, and what that really does is it keeps, it kind of keeps everyone on notice that we're watching, we have a great, safe environment, we want kids to have a rite of passage, to live like college students and have a nice time. But we're also very much monitoring that. So I think the first is socially recreate a safe, living, learning environment where they, they can play, study, have study hall groups, and have a community experience. From the physical aspects, if you travel around the United States, or travel around some of the other properties, they, the students are pretty hard on them. So if you don't use high-quality materials and have a pretty unique design, we, we spend a lot of time in focus groups, learning how the students work, and we stay ahead of it. We're very happy for them to use it and be students and kind of use our materials, but we charge them, and we keep it fresh throughout the process, every time we turn. And I think the third thing is really how you interact with the community. Because, like I said, there's often this kind of debate where the university is encroaching on a lot of the area, or they're becoming part of the community, and really working with it. So we really do try to work with the local community and make sure our properties are well-received. And we've had, we are doing a property in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and Wilmington, North Carolina. We just finished one in Myrtle Beach, and we've been very well-received by both the university and all the residents and neighbors, or most of them, I should say.
Thank you. Do you all manage your own properties?
We don't, we use a third-party manager, but they'll be one of the two national providers that, you know, have somewhere between 10 and 40,000 beds under their portfolio.
Thank you.
I might just make a comment to you. I think you've picked a lovely location for it. I think with OSU going north, I think that makes a lot more sense to go into multifamily as opposed to, I don't see shopping ever coming up there, it hasn't been there. It has been a traditional apartment complex since the 40s. I got verified from that out there. So thank you for that. But again, if this comes to fruition, welcome to town and good luck to you. And again, thank you for going through our sketch process and...
Thank you. Well, we're real pleased to be here, thank you very much.
Good luck with the PUD.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation, Kelly? Okay. Well, I just, again, would ask commissioners here, kind of, for your, your take. And again, this isn't a true yes or no at this point, obviously, but I'm sure the developer would like to hear any input that we might have, that you could pass along to them, good or bad.
I would say initially, I would be for it. I think, I think you've done, it's obviously always important to hear public input, and what the neighbors and staff would implement into that process, if we can make that a better environment for them also. But I think initially, I would, I would be all for it. I like how you've pulled all the apartments closer to Boomer, instead of pushing it to the back. I think there is a nice, natural buffer on the back. And I think it's an area of town that would be nice to be revitalized, so, I mean, initially, I'd be all for it.
I agree, I think it looks really nice what they're proposing, as long as, you know, I'm sure they'll mitigate any adverse impacts with regards to traffic and drainage and those sorts of things through the process, but I definitely think it is a definite, appears to be a definite upgrade from what's there now, and it would be a welcome site across all of the new, new development on the east side of the road where the high school has built some things, so that would be my opinion.
I would agree with David, I think I would, I would be interested in hearing a little more about your, your plans with the traffic. I think you've been extremely fair in the process to the residents by, by going east with your buildings. I like your setbacks and your units per acre. I think initially, you've done a great job of trying to be fair to the community, and look forward to getting a little more input from you and seeing where this goes. But I would support it at this point.
Commissioner Booker?
I think my initial reaction is very favorable. I'm concerned about the traffic and where it's going, and whether to go through the neighborhood, and those sort of issues. I think this gives a great opportunity for maybe the city, Oklahoma State University, let's develop work together to maybe do some trails along the floodplain for bicycles and walking and that sort of thing, and would, we have a lot of things planned south of this with athletics and other facilities, and I think it'd be an excellent combination to work together, so people walking or bicycling don't have to get on the street, and can go through the floodplain, through Athletic Village, and to their classes. So I think that's a great opportunity we might be able to, to look at.
Well said. Have anything further, Becky?
Nope, just look forward to the process. I think Mike brings up a very good point on being so close, that there might be some added opportunities there.
And you may or may not tell, I work for Oklahoma State University.
Yeah, you may want to give him your card. Anyway, I...
I think she already has it.
Probably so. But no, I'll, I'll say the same thing, I think when we have an opportunity to, to place student housing close to the university, I think it really helps take some stress off of our other streets in town. You know, that's definitely bicycle distance and walking distance from, from the university. And so I commend you guys for finding that piece of property. Like I say, I live there, or close, and it never had dawned on me that a person could do it that way. So I look forward to seeing your, your final, final design, and again, you know, the, the same issue that Commissioner Booker mentioned, trying to mitigate the traffic to the west as much as possible. Would like to make sure when we do those retaining walls, Kelly, we do something there that's not 30 feet tall, you know, which I'm sure y'all will work through that, I have ever confidence in that. And again, to the public, please, please stay involved, and with these meetings, and again, if this comes here, you're more than welcome to come here and, and speak with us. Again, on the PUD, as Paula had mentioned, we do have some lighting too. It's strictly not a yes or a no. We can, we can ask for some additional items and things to help mitigate maybe some concerns y'all might have, so, again, encourage everybody to, to come out and speak. And again, thanks for the presentation, appreciate it, and hopefully welcome to town. Okay, with that, we'll move on to approval of the meeting summary for discussion and possible action, our minutes for March 19th, 2013. Any changes, deletions, additions, motions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second to approve. Please place your votes. Those minutes are approved, 601. Moving on to approval of the minutes from May 7th, 2013. Again, anything there?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second to move for approval. Please place your votes.
You guys are not going to lie.
Yeah, you're doing okay.
We're at the bottom.
And those minutes are approved also, 601. Next item, miscellaneous items for staff for discussion and possible action, our next planning commission meeting will be June 18th, 2013. And with that, we consider a motion for adjournment.
I saw move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion of second to adjourn. We have to reset there, Cindy.
Who wants to stay?
I guess we're going to stay.
It's you. You voted.
I guess somebody's, the only yours went offline.
Uh-oh. So that was the problem?
Yes, sir.
We're going to start the meeting all over again.
How about we just take a verbal call for...
Verbal vote would work, yes ma'am.
All those against adjournment? That's what I thought.
The meeting is adjourned.